Pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, individual, liberty, justice, and for all.
Thank you. First item is Lee Construction LLC site plan, uh, nineteen, there's nineteen. Who signed it? Give your name and.
My name is Bill Brodsky, I'm the advocate.
(laughing).
Mr. Brodsky, would you like to claim your project, please?
Okay, so we are in front of the board here, uh, we have previously gotten preliminary from your board. Uh, this is the site plan for a residential house at twenty-three St. Louis Avenue. It's a culmination of a subdivision that was completed in two thousand thirteen. Uh, we've been down the road a long ways here, uh, we've changed a lot of things around. Uh, when I asked for the board and I got preliminary, I was told I needed to go back and get zone board appeals and architecture review board approvals, we have gotten those. We've taken care of it, as you'll see in the review, we've taken care of almost all of the reviews from everybody that refers to the board, and now we're in front of your board for a final approval.
Okay. Uh, I'm kind of remiss, if anybody's here to listen to this project, please, there's seats up in front, this way you can hear better what's going on, and if you have any questions, uh, better. Okay, uh, I'm gonna go through the subject reports, sir. Um, Cross-Review has no further comments. March twenty-second, Jane Slaven, has three comments. Department of Environmental Management Engineering dated March twenty-first. Uh, I'm not gonna read all the comments out loud, they will all be put into the record, so they will be part of the record. Uh, if you wanna see the comments, they're up on the, on the table, please, uh, you know, review them wherever they were, but, uh, if there's something extremely germane, we will read it. Like I said, the Department of Environmental Management, March twenty-first, has seven comments. Masters Consulting, they're our drainage consulting, and their final comment is, overall, the proposed stormwater management plan meets the intent of the regulations, and therefore we recommend the (inaudible) minor subdivision group drainage subject to the above project conditions, of which there are two. I also have a letter from the Fire Prevention, Fire Prevention, Town of Orange Town, says this office has no further comments. I also have from, uh, Department of Highways, Town of Orange Town, from James Dean.
Did you read the entire letter?
This, this, I will put it out, we'll read it parallel. Thank you. Uh, this is addressed to Mr. Brodsky, says, Dear Bill, in consideration of a few Sterling Avenue residents concerned about old growth cedar trees, the open path of the proposed drainage on Sterling Avenue, Jim Dean, Superintendent of Highways, is requiring you to move the drainage into the roadway, so that the back of the proposed basins are even with the edge of the roadway. This will minimize the impact that the excavating will have on the roots, structures of said trees. In addition to the relocation of the drainage, Jim Dean is requiring that an arborist of the town's choosing be present during the installation of the drainage line to ensure adequate measures of taking to preserve the health of aforementioned trees. The arborist will be provided at your expense. Please close off this time and questions. Uh, also, I have a petition signed by the members of, um, of Sterling Avenue, um, I guess roughly, I think there's, there's twenty names on it. Cheryl's ready, else?
That's it.
Okay. Okay, the board? Mr. Mandel?
Regarding the storm and drain in the, first of all, did the perp test conduct?
Yes.
When?
Well, we had two perp tests. We had the perp test from the original basins, and then we had a perp test that was done about two weeks ago.
During the winter, kind of the spring?
No, it was all the conditions as per fairway testing, alright, were spring conditions. No, no frost, nothing. And they were satisfied with DEME.
No, the, uh?
DEME, et cetera. Fairways testing, and I gave a copy to fairway tech, to, uh, DEME, and to the building department.
They were, they're all kind of plants?
Yes. As part of the requirements from Bruce Peters.
Right, okay. Regarding the, uh, drain in the street?
Yeah.
How far north is that being moved from your original post location?
About two and a half feet.
Two and a half feet, oh.
Yeah. This is what Jimmy Dean wants.
It's just, yeah, it's just move it out, we're moving at the arborist before, uh, from, uh?
I understand, they wanted it six feet.
Yeah.
Alright, Jim Dean and his arborists.
Uh-huh, no, no, Jim Dean didn't, somebody has a letter about the arborists. He says you, the town-
This is what Jim Dean asked for.
The town will supply an arborist.
No, I didn't.
At your expense, he doesn't say an arborist. So I'm looking at the, uh?
You can't move it six feet into the middle of the road, you can't add drainage in the middle of the road.
You can't have catch basins in the middle of the road.
Right.
Right, because you're gonna have drainage, I see there's drainage in the middle of the road. Sewer line on the town, not in the road.
Sewer line is not drainage line. Sewer lines are sewer lines, drainage lines are drainage lines.
I still think it should be moved further out to the roadway, going by the arborists that they submitted, and, uh, at this point, I'll just, uh, is any, I'll be sure to invite them to make additional questions.
Uh, the only thing I can say in respect to the location of the drainage pipe, I think that's a little bit up to the Highway Department, and working in conjunction with the arborists. If the arborist sort of has to come out, I believe Jimmy Dean will have to, uh, I mean, I don't know, I'm not an expert with it, but I think that, uh, it's gonna have to be one of them.
So I'm looking at the arborists, who's gonna be there when they start the digging, at which point you're gonna start now, so now we're gonna move without further, I don't see the practicality of that, but, uh, this is my opinion.
Okay, thank you, sir. Well, Mr. Young?
No, I agree with Mr. Mandel, as long as we meet, uh, Mr. Dean's requirements here, with the arborists be there, uh, replacement of this line, uh, would be very important for this project. So I have Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Mr. Dell?
I basically agree with what's been said, but I'd just like a little more clarification here. Now, uh, you put in catch basins before, we know, uh, there's an option of where you put that pipe in the catch basin, it doesn't have to be towards the street side, the pipe itself can be a little further away. I know you're gonna have to put in the catch basins, and they will have to unfortunately properly touch the curving area, otherwise you will get in a drainage, we know that too. The question is the location of pipe. The pipe can be located in such a way so that there's less disturbance, so you have a catch basin within two and a half feet, and the pipe itself can easily be four feet, five feet, six feet away. Am I not correct on that?
No. The basin itself, all, all standard basins are thirty by forty-eight, thirty inches by forty-eight inches. The pipe that's going in this particular run is a twelve-inch ADS pipe.
Right.
Alright? A twelve-inch ADS pipe, the outer limits of the pipe are about fourteen, fifteen inches, alright? What you could do within that perimeters of that catch basin is, instead of setting it on center, you could set it a little bit toward the inner part, but you're not gonna get four to six feet, you're gonna get about, you're gonna get about two feet.
Alright, well, there's another way, you could put your knockout on the outside, okay? Whereas not have it just run, just let, let them each come in, rather than basin flowing into basin flowing into basin, you could have each of them connected into a T, and then you could have your standoff that way.
I'm not even sure what you just said.
Okay? You have your catch basin, you could have your pipe running through the catch basin, this being the street side towards you, or you could have your knockout over here, where your pipe can come in, and have it join in a T, and let them all run out that way.
That one, no, let me have it.
How do you know?
I'll ask Jim if he allows it.
Well, that's what I think we should ask, because that would give us, uh, the distance that everyone's concerned about. I think no one wants to see a catch basin that's not going to work. I've seen them done in the town in various areas, where the highest point around is the catch basin, and we don't want that.
I'll tell you what, as far as you're concerned, if Jim Dean allows that, I'll go for it.
Can we do, you understand, Mr. Jim, I understand, I understand. You guys, I think if you made it, we make that on recommendation?
A recommendation that it's up to Mr. Dean.
But we would suggest, that we would prefer that he do it that way.
Well, conditionate, based upon Mr. Dean's approval.
Correct.
It would be a condition that he does.
Yeah, if Mr. Dean does not want it, then.
Right, but it's a condition, if he says that's practical, then it has to be done.
Right. Will you put that in?
I put a drainage before, it's certainly beautiful, so it's a question of, the knockout obviously the area, you punch out to put it in pipe, and that's the way it's-
It's not normally how a basin's built.
What?
It's not how a basin's built. When you order a basin, alright, you order it as per specifications, alright?
No, you specify the knockout to be on the exterior, so.
No, a knockout's a, it is not a knockout. A knockout basin's a knockout basin. It's normally, it's normally a knockout basement is normally a forty-eight by thirty by four-foot high basin.
Alright.
The inner walls on both sides, on all dif, on all four sides of it are thinner, so what you could do with a sledgehammer is knock it out, that's why it's called a knockout basin.
No, a knockout, you put, you cast something in there, like a PVC pipe, et cetera, and then when you pull the forms out, there's your hole already, you're done.
No, what they do is, when they, when they make it out of the manufacturer, I tell the manufacturer what I'm putting in, alright, and where I want-
So they don't accommodate it?
Yeah, they, but it's not a knockout. What you, what you're doing is, you're putting it into that hole, wherever that hole is. What you're asking for is that, that a T, or some type of ninety-degree goes into that area.
No.
Alright?
Just a straight knockout towards the street side, and where the pipe would join the, uh, drain pipe, uh, your main drain pipe, there you have the T.
Yeah, I understand that.
Okay, fine.
I understand.
That's all.
And I, as I said, Jim allows that, will go for it.
Okay, then that's, I think that's, that would be fine with me, I think all the other concerns are, I think, you know, trying to work with everybody, and I think you appreciate that, and I think we could resolve this if we go that way, and I'd be comfortable with it, hopefully, everybody here would be comfortable.
We have to see what the town is doing.
And we have to see what, I often want to hear what the, 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 the property, but anyway, that's it, Mr. Jim, no further.
Thank you very much. Mr. Brodsky?
I'm okay with what, uh, you know, what's proposed about, if Dean goes for that, that's fine.
Thank you very much. Um, I'm gonna open it up to the call session, I want everybody who wants to speak, I would like, you definitely have to speak, uh, I wanna limit you to three minutes, just so that, uh, we don't spend the whole table there. If a person before you says the exact same thing you think your, your concerns are, please step up, state your name and address, so it's in the record, and just say that you have the same feeling as the person before you, alright? Whose person? Come on up, state your name.
Brian H. Simpson, one oh eight Summit Avenue, Japan. The trees are along, uh, my property, they're on trees, I just, I mean, I imagine people have been to the site to see it, just to get a, get a face to it, nine-year-old cedar trees. So, um, I'm pleased that I'm seeing support and response to my concerns about the trees, my basic concern is that we don't kill the trees, obviously, or weaken them, um, and the arborist that I got said that we really should be about fifteen deep from the center line of the trunks, that's where we see the edge of the core. I talked with Jimmy Dean earlier today at some length, it was, it was a good discussion, we have actually had a discussion about this too, um, and, um, his feeling is that the roots won't go that far under the pavement, and his experience, that's been the case, but you can't, you can't absolutely know. He had suggested that exploratory hole was dug to determine in advance just the nature of the roots, at least at one point, to get a sense of where the roots are before work began. So, um, obviously, all of that, I'm pleased with, because I'm, I'm interested in us being careful about these trees, I would hate to see these trees killed to provide drainage, overflow drainage for one house, these trees have been there ninety years, and I think everybody, I hear everybody else's support of that approach. With respect to the catch basins, and I talked with him, um, the catch basins are, I, I mean, I have to say, the catch basins are basically useless on the street, except in a case like Floyd, where we're gonna have tremendous flooding, there's no drainage problem on that street, and it drains clearly. The catch basin, the two catch basins proposed, and the catch basin, that's between my driveway and the adjacent property, which would be the second catch basin, is gonna kill the tree there, because it's gonna be three to four feet off it, with a big box set in, so that catch basin set there is gonna kill the first tree coming from the house over. The, there's no regrading of the road, the road is dead flat, nothing is gonna drain to these catch basins, there is no curb on this road, but in an extreme flood event, some water will find its way to these catch basins. The catch basins were described by him, and by Mr. Brodsky, as a belt and suspender, because nothing is gonna drain to them, just if you're putting it in, you could put the catch basins in, you could put in this line with a cleanout, all the way up to Summit, to drain without a catch basin. You wouldn't be required to put a catch basin in for any other reason than that you're doing it, put some catch basins in, in cases in a severe flooding condition, in general, we'll address it here. So, he said that that's something that could perhaps be looked at, it's the engineering department that would make that, you know, he can't really speak to that, and, you know, his, the support of his letter was, was reasonable, saying that we should be careful, we should have an arborist look at this, and be sure that what we're doing is not gonna compromise the trees, but that catch basin will kill, will kill that first tree.
And, Mr. Ashes, I'm sorry, I note for the record that you are a member of ACABOR, it sounds like you're speaking as a private citizen, but if you can just put that on the record?
I am speaking as a private citizen, on this, I, I'm in favor of the house, I'm in favor of all that, I proved it, this is at the ACABOR, but I don't wanna see my six beautiful cedars that are balanced on the other side by others, I wanna see us do everything we can to preserve those.
Who made you require a, for the catch basins, Ed?
This all started last year, when I started talking with Mike Anison about how to handle it, because we're gonna get out into Steuben. The whole, the whole thing with the planning board, uh, five years ago, they should have given an easement to Mrs. Copeland's property, then I could have easily, there's a catch basins right there, but Miss Copeland had played it very coy, alright, and she ended up selling her house, and the new residents came there, a young couple, and I can't, I couldn't, even if it was me, I would say, I'm gonna move in a new house, and you're gonna put a pipe through my property? I wouldn't want that, alright, so I couldn't tell my troubles, they were wrong, alright? So I had to, we had to look into another way of handling this. The streets in that area are older, alright, the houses are older, alright, so there was no real drainage, so I went back to Mike, and I said, how do you wanna handle this? And he said, okay, we'll put a couple of catch basins in, and, uh, Mr. Brian is absolutely right, it's a belt and suspender type of thing, if there's a heavy storm, it's gonna help, it's not gonna hurt, uh, Sterling Avenue, alright? So this is what I was asked to do, was to put the catch basins in there with the twelve-inch line. Originally, we had an ADS line in there, which is, to hide that's in polyethylene line, alright? And Jim didn't want it to do it, because we were gonna put concrete up to the top, except for the top three inches, but Jim didn't wanna do that. So Jim wanted me to do, um, a reinforced concrete pipe, which is a far more extensive pipe, much more expensive for the, by, much more expensive for us to install, but I agreed upon it, because it makes sense, it all makes sense. A lot of things that have gone through with this whole smaller piece of property has made a lot of sense. Residents didn't want a big house, so I came back and I made a small house, alright? We had to change the drainage in the backyard, so it wouldn't drain onto the back beat of the people in the back, we figured out how to do that. Now we have an issue with the trees coming in front of this property. I don't even have a problem with that, they were my trees that have the same concern, alright? That's why I went back to Jim, that's why the letters are addressed to me, and I went back to Jim, and I said, okay, what do you want? This is what you guys originally wanted. Now, listening to Brian about the whole issue with the other catch basin, I'll move it, we'll pull it back further away from the tree, so that tree, that, that box isn't up against it, alright? And then we'll run the, uh, line in, in the road itself, alright? See, the, the majority of, of what we're doing here in front of those trees has nothing to do with the catch basin, it's all that twelve-inch line, alright? And it, at the, at the deepest point, it's only going down about thirty-eight, thirty-nine inches, so it's only going down waist-deep, there's not a lot of excavation done here, alright? In the road itself, where the RCP pipe is, a reinforced concrete pipe, that's only going down about sixteen inches, alright? So, and that's why Jim wanted a reinforced concrete pipe, alright? So, that, that will hold up better, alright? E, e, even now that we have to put it in the road, it'll hold up better, because nothing above it will crush it. The rest of it is three feet down, alright, going down past the trees, so the specs on an HDPV pipe is that I have to put a foot of three-quarter inch pipe, of gravel below it and above it, and then I can backfill with the natural material, and then I'll have to pave the road from there, alright?
Question, Mr. Brodsky, you're referring, you're referring to Mike Anison?
Mike Anison, I'm sorry.
Yeah, he's since obviously retired?
He retired in October, but he's working as a consultant for the tech.
He's still a consultant?
Yes.
But I thought he was mostly a highway crew supervisor, not an engineer?
Well, I can't speak to what his role is in the department, but I do know that he is back in his.
His involvement was only from a highway perspective. All the other review has gone through both Mazur and DEME, they're doing all the review, alright?
But I don't think Mazur does anything regarding streets, but they-
No, but Bruce, Bruce does.
That's what I mean, can we, Mr. Chairman, as a suggestion, we could, uh, if we wish to move this forward, we could do a condition line, that Mr. Bruce Peters look at it, with the understanding that we're trying to possibly reduce the number of catch basins, and to also to, um, have a minimal impact on this area in terms of-
Either reduce them or move, or move away from trees.
Right, and, uh, I mean, to make it subject to that review, and also, uh-
Which I think Mr. Brodsky was, was agreeable to.
Right, because that would do several things, it would save some trees, might save Mr. Brodsky a few dollars, I don't see how we can get any better than that.
I, I, I've, since I've been here, I've been conducive, uh, you know, working with everybody.
Okay, thank you.
Good, thank you. Uh, is there anybody else who would just to speak? Yes, ma'am, please come up.
Teresa Loveman, at twenty-six-
Spell your last name.
Loveman, L-O-V-E-M-A-N.
And your address.
Twenty-six Steuben Avenue.
Okay, go ahead.
And, um, I just would like to reiterate about those trees, I not only, um, know their ninety-year-old cedars, and he's talking about the beauty of them, but they actually, um, take up a tremendous amount of water. I know I've spoken many times about the, um, elevation difference on our streets, it's, it's considerable, and being that there is no drainage on Sterling Avenue, Steuben Avenue gets the brunt of it. We've had a lot of storms lately, we, we are wet, I've had moss back there that I've never had, and, um, any damage to those trees is gonna impact our street, not, not, not my house per se, but the people right down the road who are behind him. We already have a lot of runoff, and I just would like you to please take that into consideration, we're already losing, um, two, I'm sure they're also ninety-year-old, I'm not sure if they're cedar trees that are on the plants that were taken down because that line, as they understand it, there's no other way for it to work around that, but the amount of water that they are soaking up, that is also a loss, that's coming down on our property, is something that I would like you to consider. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else want to speak on this project? Yes, ma'am, please come up, state your name and address.
My name is Carolyn McCullough, I'm on one sixteen Summit.
Wait, wait, I didn't get your last name, what's your last name?
Oh, McCullough, that's a tough one as well. Sure. M-A-C, capital C, U-L-L-O-U-G-H.
Okay, and your address, yes?
One sixteen Summit Avenue.
Thank you.
I'm Brian's neighbor, uh, we all know the importance of the trees on the street, Brian's the biggest advocate, but we all are too, so I'd just like to say in support of what he's saying, we, uh, you know, we really value them, and we hope he can do anything he can to not harm the nature of that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am?
Carly Schen.
Hi, Carly?
Yep, C-A-R-L-Y.
And your last? Thank you. And your address?
Twelve Sterling Avenue.
Your one?
Yeah. Um, I'm on board with everybody else, just, um, whatever you can do to keep those trees there, they're like, the first thing you see when you come on the street, it's like, a complete value to the whole street, and just makes it, uh, feel completely homey and quiet and quaint and, um, it's part of the reason we just, we bought our house a year ago, and it's kind of part of the reason that we moved on that street, it's very beautiful, so, yeah. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else who speaks? Yes, sir, come on up. The food went to sleep. Sorry.
I'm John Conklin, I'm sixteen Sterling Avenue, and I'd just like to reiterate what Brian is trying to get accomplished here, so I agree with keeping trees, everything Brian and our neighbors are saying, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else? And motion, close call?
Motion, close call.
Second?
Second.
Come on, all favor?
Aye.
Okay. Is there any way that maybe the board could address a letter to, to accommodation Jimmy Dean and Bruce Peters, and we expect for them to look at the possibility of eliminating, moving the catch basins and/or, um, the drainage line, to get them further away from the trees? Because I think that's the board's interest to save those trees.
I would say probably the better way to do it is just vote a resolution, and then Cheryl can provide that resolution to Bruce and Jim, so I don't know that you actually need Cheryl, or you have to sit down and draft the letter.
If it's a condition of the, of your approval, it would have to be the, the, if it's the condition of the approval that both departments approve whatever plans to do, whatever they can to save the trees, I am not permitted to issue him a permit until those departments sign off.
Right.
Because we have a pre-construction meeting, and until that pre-construction meeting happens, and everyone knows, okay, he can't start construction. So all of these items will have to be resolved prior to a building permit being issued.
Okay, so that would, the easiest way would just make it a condition?
Right.
And just be clear in that condition, because obviously, it's special to this particular project, just be clear in what you want the condition to read.
And Ms. Slaven, can we assume that you would, uh, represent our opinion to the Department of, the Engineering Department here?
Well, I will work with them, obviously, yes, but I think it's most important that your concerns and your recommendations are clearly laid out in your decision.
I should want to articulate it as clearly as possible, have that be part of the record, and then we will pass it on to you for interpretation.
Right, and then my job is to make sure that all of that is met prior to releasing the permit.
Okay, because there's really nothing else on here of any concerns other than this, so, um, in my opinion, I think we can give him the final condition, that he gets these items resolved.
Agreed.
Before the building permission, and I think Mr. Brodsky's agreeable to that.
Just as long as I have a definitive idea of what I'm doing.
They're gonna have to design, of course.
Yeah, as long as they're doing the design with my engineer.
Yes.
Yeah, that's my-
And the arborist, or whatever else, you know, is needed, it's between you and them.
Yeah, I, no, I respect that, I understand.
Mr. Chairman, do you want to, for me, or, okay? Open the public portion again.
For what reason?
I don't know, I don't know, you're having a dialogue, I just wanna make sure.
Oh, because I, I, I think, I think, I think we've gotten everybody's opinion, and I see a lot of heads nodding up and down, that they kind of approve the approach that we're taking.
I agree, okay, just making sure.
All I was asking for was just a definitive idea of where I'm going.
Okay? So, do I have a motion for final with conditions?
Motion for final conditions.
Okay. Uh, let's start off with the third one, um, you guys are gonna have to help you with the, with the work, that, um, one condition is that between the Orange Town Highway Department and the Orange Town Environmental Management-
DEM.
-work out between themselves and an arborist, the, um, best location, uh, for the drainage, um, whether they move the catch basins, or remove catch basins, but the best place to lay the pipe for the minimum amount of, uh, damage to the trees.
Basically, you also say moved in a normally direction, I think that, um, and I think, Mr. Chairman, we also might wanna put in there, um, in consultation- we also might wanna put in there, um, in consultation with Ms. Slade rather than those two guys.
Well, she's gonna be right in the middle of it, she's gonna, she's gonna issue the.
That goes without, that goes without saying.
She's not getting a permit unless I sign it.
Okay, well, I'm gonna make sure that they would communicate with you.
Yeah.
So, what happens if just.
In consultation with the arborist.
Yes, I had added that, an arborist also.
Just to remind the board, there has to be a great construction meeting with all these parties involved.
Right.
Prior to the issue, on any project.
Yeah.
So, it's automatically done by default.
And, and.
Good, thank you.
Go through the back, the rest of the decisions. This is gonna have to be done before anything else gets gone. I believe this, this drainage gets done before you even start building yourself.
Uh, she won't give me the permit?
Yeah.
So, they see the, to move or eliminate.
Right, in fact, to, as a double, then Cheryl is not permitted to sign the plan until the other departments give the sign off, so.
Okay.
If it's on the conditions, that's binding, so.
Okay. Does that sound all right with everybody?
Yeah, as long as it's to move or eliminate. Catch basins. And move the drainage pipe in a regularly direction.
Right, just get everything away from the trees.
Yeah.
Okay, do I have a second?
No, it should be more than away from the cedars.
Wait, we step back.
The trees.
Just say move them in a normally direction.
You wanna make me read it back to everybody, that's exactly what it is.
Comments that they have, this would give you more ideas of what everybody's looking for. So the next time you come back, you can, you know, correct them or discuss whatever problems, issues that arise. But this way you'll hear everybody's view on it.
Okay.
All right? Again, I'm not going to read every, every item on the consulting report. So we'll just go there from. From Jane Slaven, Office of Goody's on Clanny, dated March twenty-second. She has Penn Island. If you have any questions regarding any of what we're going through, please, we can discuss that. Department of Environmental Management and Engineering, March twenty-first, which figures as thirteen. Booker Engineering, they do our drainage work for us. Drainage review recommendation, the applicant does not include any drainage designs. It does not demonstrate that potential significant impacts with respect to stormwater runoff and humidity. Therefore, recommend that Penn fifty route nine W cycling not be approved for drainage at this time. And there are nine items concerned. Rockland County Clanny. Jane, what did you say in respect to this?
In their item summary, they state that no variants are required to construction of this welling. Presently, as proposed per my letter, that they would require variances. So we reviewed that at the PRC meeting with the applicant.
Okay, so you're aware of that?
We are, we're changing.
Okay. Do we have to do anything in respect to that?
No, I just wanted to make it clear that.
Okay, I know we had a whole wide range on it. Okay, okay. Oh, Rockland County Clanny, I'm sorry, March twenty-seventh letter has eight items. Rockland County Highway Department has two. Rockland County Health has two.
What was the two on the health?
Almost well.
Excuse me?
There was one for the well and the health department, it was over here.
On the street off of.
Okay, yeah, yeah, right.
Okay.
Assistant Department of Skew. And then I have four from Rockland County Highway and Rockland County Health is nowaging that we're related. And also Orange County D E F. Mr. Slaven, okay. Just tell us this, I'd like to see a few things. It looks like a good site. I see you redoing the driveway for us. The, the, the outside, is that patio or deck coming around the house?
It's patio.
Is that, now I'm looking at it, part of it shows stairs going down.
Right.
So part of it is elevated?
Yeah, it's gonna be raised.
Okay, part of it, so you want the ground hole?
Yeah.
Okay.
Smokestack.
Yeah, look at Mr. Peters' face because kind of affect the setback distance.
Right, that's what we're changing.
Oh, okay.
We're fixing that, that's where the variance went.
Yeah, it's, okay. The wall, you know, about that design and everything. That driveway, you say it's ten percent smoke all the way down?
It will be.
Okay.
If it doesn't happen already, it will be.
Right, so that's what's on the plan. Yeah, it's on the plan.
Yes.
Okay, it's what it's, you know, I emphasize that. It's not here, but because when you come out of the N W there, it's, it's a little crazy. You might see the site distance either way. And as far as coming out of driveway, what's your site distance north and south?
Okay.
Doesn't go all that easier.
Does it change, it's gonna be on the other side.
Yeah, it makes a big difference. Coming out of the driveway, it's a little tight coming out of there.
And you're gonna put the driveway where the old was?
No, on the opposite side.
Okay. Yeah, it's kind of.
In order to get the ten percent, yes.
Right, yeah, it's going south, so it's gonna give you better south, better site distance for the, for the ones.
It just is the room, take the driveway, bring it around the front.
Right, yeah, makes a big difference. And D E M E, so you've got to check it up, you're doing your plans out, preparing, trying to do this current, what it looks like now, the site. If you're one of those, so if you mentioned D E M E nine.
Right.
But, you know, all, all those things were in the, the only thing wasn't the D E S site plan, so it's a lot of, it looks like a nice outside. I put these.
Should be a nice spot there.
Yeah. All this is written down in the results, I see.
That's a different way to decide from under.
So we'll keep it away, we'll get this all addressed before the next meeting.
Yeah, we're just, we're beyond it. I agree with Mr. Bond, the property needs to be designed.
Should be nice all night.
That's not a good.
That's all, that's all I know.
Mr. Slaven?
Yeah, a couple of questions. First of all, obviously, your wall is eight foot high on a couple of locations on the northerly side. That's a pretty large, pretty thick height for a long distance. What you may want to do is consider terracing it and then allow.
Four feet in between.
Right, and then you do that, you have room for planting.
Yeah.
And if you have a forty-five degree slope, you've gotten rid of a couple of feet of, of the wall. So visually, that would help out. Now, is this in the same exact footprint as the existing building or is it different?
It's covering some, you know, a lot of old.
The old building, I assume, was, I think, a little smaller?
Yeah.
Right, okay. One thing I have a problem with is the way you have the driveway designed, and I think other people have picked up on it also. You have that long straight run of about, it looks like almost eighty feet uninterrupted, a straight line. Are you gonna have some sort of a drainage intercept where it curves back to the south? Do you want to talk about?
He doesn't have one on there.
There should be some sort of drainage intercept along that area. That would be along the easterly side of the driveway where it basically goes in a southerly direction.
Against the wall?
You understand what I'm saying?
Next to the wall.
Uh, not against, well, the other side.
On the other side?
Well, yeah, there's your.
On the street side?
Let's see, am I right on this? Let's just come and check.
Here, this is the street side, so you watch something on that side.
Right, that would be the eastern side.
So anything running off the driveway?
Right, if you intercept it there, I think it would be a lot better than just letting it, you know, go around the corner.
Okay, I mean, I could make recommendations.
Well, this is. Yeah, that has to be addressed as part of the drainage submission.
Okay, well, I think you're probably gonna come out with that, you know, because that would be a natural thing to do.
Yeah, people will pick up on that.
I also wonder why you have the, your drainage area, your storage area for your drainage, in that portion of the front yard. I'm wondering whether or not there might be bedrock in that area.
I don't think there's any bedrock over there.
Don't think?
Don't think. I, well, I know there was a whole, a test hole done a while back, not through me.
I know, no rock has come in that while, but I mean, what was the depth that you put into? And was it in this specific drainage area? And was there only one or several?
It was, I think, two test holes done.
In this precise area?
Yes.
Okay, well, as that's been taken care of. Uh, you are eliminating a number of trees to the east of the building. They would be, they're all extender, I think you see them there?
Three maple, yeah.
Yeah, I'm seeing the way these great, grates have been configured. And it doesn't make, you know, any sense now, reviewing the plant field for a long time. And I don't see any reason why you can't have a little bump out, a little island here, protect them, because that's gonna cut down the noise in the road, et cetera. I don't think it's gonna interfere much with the view, which a lot of people are after, and I understand that. But I don't see it as being any problem, it's just a question of resupplanting that area. When you do that, the amount of area that's gonna be contributing to the drainage will also be reduced. Because obviously, as was pointed out by the previous people in talking about the previous application, they do have a tendency to absorb water.
Yeah.
So, you know, why, I don't understand, unless there's something about them, you don't want them, or whatever. But it looks like someone just drew this in very quickly to get it done.
We're just trying to open it up as much as could for the view. And that's what the whole lot's about.
I understand, but.
It's what you're paying a big bucks.
Yeah, big taxes.
And I understand, but I'm wondering, it's a pretty high price to pay. You know, you may be able to get rid of the first one, the eighteen, but the others, I kind of wonder.
I don't, I mean, I don't think there are any special trees that we're talking about there.
Some of them are maples.
Yeah, I mean, not, you know, not ninety-year-old cedars.
No, I understand. I'm just trying to figure out what to do on that. It just seems like a lot of unnecessary site disturbance. Well, just have them take a look at it, they'll mind. Who do you have doing the grating?
Salatana.
Is that, you said, with an engineer?
Salatana, yeah.
Okay. All right, so maybe ask them to check on that. We don't obviously understand you want to view, but by the same, then we also want to make sure that we have something going on here. That there's some sort of wood infurge, or at least a few, some sort of growth between nine W and the house. Because it is quite a height, let's ask, this is at two eighty-seven, and the street is about two sixty, two sixty-six. So you have at least a ton of different.
Yeah, there's no utilities going through that area?
There is one.
No, there's underground, I think, too, proposed.
Well, you can't have them go through the drainage area.
No.
I understand, they're coming off, they're coming off the corner.
Where the trees are located.
Yeah, you might have, well, depends on what you're doing. Now, you're having, this is gonna be septic or is this gonna be?
Septic.
Septic, okay, where is that on here?
Uh, the septic is gonna be in the front.
Where?
He didn't put it on there.
Well.
That might be why the trees are coming out.
Underground detention area, that's not using what I call septic, is it?
No, 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 septic drainage. Uh, you know what it was with the septic, was we couldn't do a test spot yet.
All right.
Because I wasn't.
All right, so this all has to be then checked out, you know? And again, you might have to do some additional doors, et cetera, whatever you have to do.
Right. But I wasn't, I wasn't gonna do any land disturbance, so they couldn't find a spot for the septic yet.
No, I understand that, but in order for us to approve it, it might be nice if we knew what was. We have a hard time approving it without that.
Okay.
Because that would have an impact. Now, I'd suggest also, too, it'd be a lot clearer in this case, because of the steep slope condition and it's an environmentally sensitive area. It wouldn't hurt if this drawing was an inch equals ten square meters. It could be twice the size, and then you have an easier time distinguishing what exactly is going on. Because right now, it's a little crowded in there, and I would like to see that clarification. So that could help your, your communication and the whole process going on. And also, too, if by doing that, you might find some interesting little things that you didn't know. So rather than holding up the process later, you could get a clarification now.
Great.
And that's it, Mr. Jane.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Bond.
No, I understand yesterday, you said somebody's some more than you do.
Right.
Yeah, I'll wait for those back. I don't really have a problem with those three trees anymore.
Can I ask for a?
Sure, so, yeah.
The plan shows a sewer line.
Yes.
So they're all.
Pying into nine W.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, so.
So you're not.
Want to make sure if what are you?
Well, the health department said it was okay to go with the septic, if we could do it, if we could perk.
Okay, because, yeah, it wasn't in their comments.
They did say it was okay.
Okay.
But we couldn't get the perk, because when I was getting demolition from it, they told me, don't disturb the land. And that meant you can dig into perk holes.
Right, because at that point, you only have demolition from it.
Right, so I just wanted to be able to dig perk holes so I could get something on the prints to, you know, I didn't want to.
Yeah, well, you'll have to do it as part of this process, so, yeah, I just want a clarification, so you're not necessarily sure which way you're gonna go yet.
Well, they said as long as it perks, we go with the septic, that's what I would like to do. I was just stuck in between that spot where I didn't want to disturb, you know, I didn't want to ruffle anybody's feathers until.
Right, no, that's fine, I just want everyone to understand that the sewer is shown up.
Okay.
Why are you talking septic?
So.
That's why I asked the question, because I.
So can he, can he go ahead and do his, uh, test, I mean, or his?
I wouldn't.
Even with the continuous, because I mean.
We're, we're, yes, with the.
In order to put on the plans, he needs to know which way.
In order to do the engineering, he needs to do it. The only thing I would ask is that he get approval of the timing from Bruce Peters, because Bruce is very specific about when it should be done. So I would not want you to waste your time and money, and then Bruce rejected.
Bruce's.
Bruce Peters is the head of D E, or the engineer for D E M E. Okay, he was, he was sitting at the PRC on the right.
He wanted the perk test for the wall, though, for the engineering of the wall. I'm talking about the perk for the.
I understand that, but ultimately, he's going to review all this stuff, so.
Okay.
Let's reach out to him first before you go forward with any of the perk tests, because he has dates that he wants to be done.
Even he, would we use the same one for the health department, too?
Well, no, it depends on your location.
Well, that's what I'm saying, so can I do theirs without his, okay? Or do them at separate times, or do them all at the same time, or?
Well, that's up to you. I mean, it's probably more cost effective to do them all at the same time.
Right.
So, but I would definitely check with Bruce Peters before you go do it, because he might reject it, and then.
Because you want them all on at one time, because you want them with the water table as high as possible, so you know what you're dealing with. Otherwise, you put in a nice dry septic, and after the first rain, you have everything running down your driveway that you wouldn't want to do.
Right.
It's spring, I can't imagine that it's gonna be that.
Well, I think he, you know, I don't think he likes them before April fifteenth, so.
I mean, it's April first. I'm not, I mean, it's not, I mean, it's not that.
He's the one that finally approves them, so I'm just making the recommendation here.
Okay.
Yeah, I just want to be working out.
I mean, it's not a lot of time, just one. Bruce Peters.
Yeah.
Okay, he's working out.
We didn't want to.
And then it's okay with everybody, like, coming and do this.
Yeah, it's time to do it, so you have to work out. Eventually, we are. If you can get the county and head to do it at the same time, then you're ahead of it.
Okay, well, yeah, the health department said, whatever.
Okay, so once you get this, you get them a call and do the same thing, okay, agree?
Okay.
All right, okay, anything else?
No.
Good. Any other ask for the people?
Oh, I know.
Can I, can you?
Are you here for this, are you here for this circuit? You want, you want to take public comments?
Oh, no, I'm sorry, is there any, any public comments?
Yeah.
This is one quick, oh, sure, I'm sorry.
All right, my name is Peter Roy, my wife and I own ten sixty, uh, or nine W, just, uh.
I'm sorry, you said ten sixty?
Ten sixty, yeah, Jason North. I know Brian, like him, and I want to be successful in this. And outside of building a yurt or a survivalist bunker, any domicile is gonna improve my property value. My big concern is there's a tremendous drainage problem on that, all the residences there. My belief, in the twenty-five years I've been there, that it stems from open development on Tweet Boulevard, and it has to be dealt with. My concern is that the drainage be dealt with in such a way that it doesn't affect my property to the north. That's all I'm here now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. This gentleman used to design a drainage plan, on how he would like to handle it. Our drainage consultant will review it, they'll check it, they'll go out in the field, they'll do it again. And their requirements is to not allow, like, to, for a zero runoff in the.
Zero.
Okay, there's zero increase runoff in the property. So they will come up, between the two of them, they'll work out a drainage program. Like I said, now, he made a comment here that there was a lot of things that had to be done, and what was submitted was not approved.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Point of clarification, when they say zero increase, well, basically what they're saying, and they don't quite say it accurately. It's the hundred-year flood, but the odds, the, it's not a flood that occurs every hundred years, it's just the odds of it occurring in any year are quote, one in a hundred. And there seem to be quite a few of them. And all that means is during that peak flooding time, no additional water is added to it. But the water doesn't vanish, what happens is it's just then released over a longer period of time.
I just want to be clear, in twenty-five years I've been there, there is always the drainage problem. Starting in two thousand and four, my driveway slowly eroded and got destroyed by drainage coming off Tweet Boulevard. It is always a problem, and it's not for a two, a thousand-year flood, or a hundred-year flood, or a ten-year flood.
So.
It's a, it's always a problem. On really dry summers, it's good, otherwise, it's a problem. This year was extraordinarily bad year. Chopping ice, myself, I'm sixty-two years old, and I want Jimmy to keep in shape, because I was out there chopping ice every day. And when you say zero runoff, it's, it's, or.
Zero net, you mean zero net increase.
It's just a matter, for me, he has to deal with it, I just want to make sure that, how it's dealt with, that my, my problem doesn't get worse.
Right, well, since we were dealing with a record here, I just wanted to make sure that it was clarified as to what we're talking about, not only for your clarification, but also, too, for the record itself.
Okay.
That is all, thank you.
Okay, anybody else with a call? Motion, both public, motion.
Second, no. Oh, I'm sorry.
Wants to be continued on to the April twenty-fourth, the meeting.
Did you forward your request back to Daniel?
Yes, we can have a.
We're not calling it.
April twenty-fourth, the meeting.
April twenty-fourth.
Right.
I gotta get everything together.
Yeah.
Yep, you got a lot of work.
I have a second on that, I think Mr. Bond did, Mr. Bond. What, it's, can I? No, it's just the.
Yeah.
We don't, okay. Okay, all right, what?
Thank you very much.
Let's leave it at that.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, next item is Orange County, first of seventy-four years, nineteen to twenty-one.
Geraldine Torrello, Department of Torrello and Wesley. I don't really have much to say, other than to ask you to approve the value of the bond as recommended by Mr. Bond.
That's not our mistake. She has your seat, I wrote this in comments. A letter from. Billson Park. Department of Environmental Management, by former file.
Excuse me, you gotta keep your voices down.
Excuse me? Oh, excuse me.
This, this was.
We'll just wait a few minutes and we'll come with this anyway. The bond, it's a new requirement from the old bond, which was on September twenty-seventh, two thousand seventeen. Closeout are iron pins, five thousand, four hundred dollars. Cotton sidewalks, fifteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. Driveway openings, twenty-seven thousand. Gas bill drawings, ten thousand, eight hundred. Storm during sixteen thousand, six hundred and ten. Soil, aroma, settlement control, sixty-eight thousand, six hundred and twenty hours. Sanitary sewers, eleven thousand, one hundred and fifty. Subtotal of one hundred and fifty-five thousand, three hundred and thirty dollars. New strain of closing cost of thirty-one thousand, sixty-six dollars. Total bond of one hundred and eighty-six thousand, two hundred and ninety-six dollars. Inspection fee of four thousand, six hundred and fifty-nine dollars and ninety cents. That's all I have, right, Cheryl?
Yes.
Just that. Okay, do I have a motion approved on?
I'll make a motion.
Second. Get all favor?
Aye.
Motion, so.
And Mr. Ward, you also have to set the term, and the term is usually two years.
Okay.
So if you could vote on the term as well.
You have two years?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, we'll set the term for the.
I'll make a motion to, for the two years.
Seconded. Okay, all favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Yes, you too. Okay, um, Ferguson subdivision, nineteen to twenty-two, that one here?
No, they can't make it, they.
Sorry, well, we can go ahead.
Yeah, you can definitely go ahead.
There's no objection to ninety-eight century, maybe you don't have any objection to it, right? So I'll make a motion to accept the ninety-two.
Second motion. Okay, uh, there's, there's no more comments on it, so all favor? Aye. Opposed? None, okay, second, I did this. Thank you. Other business. We will do a comment. Yeah, I don't know if that's. How are all these National Historic Preservation Act things getting involved with it? Is this a current tower, or?
This is co-location.
Co-location on existing power one, I believe, or plaza. So are they building for historic architectural? What, what are we doing with this?
Just say, go ahead and do it.
Yeah, that's fine.
I know, I know, I know, I know.
I know we should do that.
The Blue Hill one, it's odd.
That was.
But, that's what I'm saying, but the other one, the question kind of made sense, but.
Oh, this is.
The one for, uh.
Yeah, we can do that.
For P R C.
Let's go to Blue Hill one first. No objection, right?
Anybody have objection to?
We don't have to, do we have to vote on that?
No.
No, no objection.
No objection.
Okay. One forty, over Marsburg Road. The one of mine, following sixteen installations, is two and ten, and so on, six. I related, but.
Okay, that's on the.
Oh, the smokestack.
Yeah, that's on the smokestack.
That's over in, uh, uh, DC Rockland State Hospital, right?
Yeah.
That's, they originally wanted to build the Van Hap farm.
Yeah.
Right, right. They told the technical, the other places, including the smokestack over in R I C, but apparently, they did, and they, the seams from their diagram covers all the area. But they said they were looking to cover.
Yeah, of course.
So.
Everybody okay with this?
Yeah, but we can, can we also say in this case, Mr. Chairman, that it's a campus-like setting, therefore, has minimal impact on any residential areas?
And you're. That's really the factory where, where that is. It's a warehouse, so it's not a campus, it's hidden.
Well, it's not a campus, it's campus. Basically, it's one large unit that was built together.
Right.
A de facto campus, not a campus, campus. The idea is, you call it, you know, a, a large commercial, uh, development, whatever you want to. The idea is that in case someone else comes back and it's on some, you know, in a, in a residential neighborhood and the people are upset, they will use this as precedent suggests. Okay? That's all, I'm just trying.
Okay, yeah. I mean, that seems great work, because that's one of the reasons we knocked out the Van Hap farm.
Right.
Because of residential.
Right, so we want to make sure this is.
Sure, I understand, do you have to refer?
Uh, on attorney, sir? Do you understand what I'm referring to?
As you're supposed to look at the historic and the architectural impact.
I don't have any documentation whatsoever.
Take a look at what this referral is.
For, for the, for the one at the RP State. They state that one of the reasons we're not really gonna, gonna be a problem with it, it's essentially in a previously, in the center of a previously developed industrial zone. And the reason for saying that would be just in case somebody picks this out, or let's say Van Hap wants to sue, why did you do it there and not do it there? We already have that little condition put in there, was the reason that we're doing this.
Plus, it's already.
It's already.
It's existence or picture.
Well, I know that, but you might have, we may not have another co-location, uh, where it could be objectionable and honorous. And a lot of people, and we wouldn't have a leg to stand on if they're trying to use this as precedent, which they quite often do.
Right, well, so just, just for the record, they're just looking for comments, so this board.
Yes.
What you say is just comments, I don't know that that would really separate.
Okay, okay. Well, just say in our comments, or at least it's in the records, that it's in the middle of a previously developed area, and has minimal impact on residential properties, or something along that way.
And there's no historic value to that area?
Well, that, you can't, don't, don't go there.
Well, that's what they're asking.
No.
Yeah, so.
Well, I think they're asking if you feel that the installation of this equipment.
No, it's going to affect any.
Affect any possible historical value, which is not.
I mean, there's a ten is there already, so it's not gonna, it's not gonna affect any.
That's the word.
So, so I think the board should make a resolution, and then Cheryl can provide whatever your comments are to the consulting department.
Okay, we just did, that's the comments, and that's the resolution.
Did, did you vote on it?